I'll call this meeting to order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Childley Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the Gates of Childley News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the Town Hall. If you could please silence your cellphones and/or pagers. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the public of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In event of emergency, please use the exits to the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda in the way it was published unless otherwise stated. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you're representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, upon completion of comments from the board and the side table, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand, state your name and address for the record. Please speak so all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. I will now introduce the board members and the side table participants. Tonight, as our Joe Defendis has been excused, Keith Bozek will be in his place, our planning board alternate. Matt Emmons has been excused. Mike Leone will be in his absence, will be our alternate. Al Hellaby has been excused. I am Mike Nian. Glenn Hyde. David Cross. And Paul Blozier. At our side table, our Planning Board Council is Matthew Piston. Our Commissioner of Public Works is David Lindsay. And our Building Department Manager is Paul Wanzunreid. Sandy Hewlett will be our Recording Secretary tonight. Our first application is the application of Schultz Associates, PC, 129 South Union Street, Spenceport, New York, 14559. The applicant: Effortless Real Estate, LLC, 1440 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624. Owner for preliminary site plan approval to erect an addition, which is a walk-in cooler at the property located at 1440 Scottsville Road in the GB District.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Hatch with Schultz Associates, Engineers and Land Surveyors, here with my client, Mike Cesaro. He's the owner of the property, which is white. As you stated, he proposed a walk-in cooler addition. It's going to be going on the southwest side of the building, 53 by 19. And it's going to have internal access from the inside of the building, and then also at the back of the building, there will be an access door for food deliveries and pickups for the business. It's already pre-existing pavement in the area, so there's no change in the drainage. It's pretty much going to stay the same. There are going to be some proposed bollards on the outside of the building. And from our meeting that we had with the Architectural Advisory Board earlier this evening, we'll be adding some outside lighting at the corners of the building to match the ones that are already on the building. That is what my client is looking to do. He's been working with staff since May on this, so finally have all of our ducks around and we're good for you.
Great. Paul, why don't we start with you tonight? You have any questions?
No.
Dave?
I don't.
What?
I've got no questions.
Hey, Mike?
No.
Keith?
No questions.
Okay. And I do have the recommendations of the AAC, and you'll be able to comply with each of those recommendations. The Architectural Advisory Committee went before. Okay. The only other comments that I had was from our Conservation Board, and that was to provide some sort of landscaping, perhaps planters along the building or in front, as well as some plantings around the flagpole, perhaps. If you're going to be putting in bollards, you could probably put in actual planters. It would probably suffice to do the same thing if you bought the right ones.
Yeah. I was talking to my client earlier about that. He was proposing to put some flag over the outside around the building.
Okay. Very good. Side table, any questions? At this time, I'll open up the public comment. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
Vote to close the public comment?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any further discussion? Comments? Do you have elevations? Looks like you're going to decorate the outside of that to match the building, so that'll look more like an addition of the building, not a walk-in cooler.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you guys had provided copies of the...
We were. We have the copies. So nothing's changed on that, the copies that we have? Okay, great. All right. So as far as Seeker, then, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes for Seeker. As far as conditions, I have the following conditions for the application. Approval is subject to final approval of the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works. The Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the Town Fire Marshal. Any signage change shall comply with the Town Code, including obtaining signed permits. Planning Board affirms the recommendations of the Architectural Advisory Committee, request that the applicant comply with these recommendations. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. The application is subject to all required permits, inspections, code compliance regulations, and no outside storage is allowed. Any additional conditions required? If not...
Building permit applied.
I'm sorry?
Needs a building permit.
Okay. Okay. I do have that in there. So with those conditions, this is a final waiver, Paul? We have been applied, okay. Application of Schultz Associates, PC, 129 South Union Street, Spenceport, New York, 14559. Applicant: Effortless Real Estate, LLC, 1440 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14624. Owner for preliminary site plan approval with the waiver final to erect an addition, walk-in cooler, at the property located at 1440 Scottsville Road in the GB District. Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. This is approved?
Thank you very much.
Our next application is the application of Keith Vogler, 106 Christina Drive, North Childley, New York, 14514. The applicant: Anthony Coleman Ali, 51 King Road, Churchville, New York, 14428. The owner, for renewal of a special use permit to allow uses of a similar character, which is motor vehicle repair, at the property located at 51 King Road in the LI District.
Yes, just applying...
Excuse me, sir. Your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Keith Vogler, 106 Christina Drive, North Childley.
Thank you.
Yes, we're applying for a renewal of the special use permit. That will be better if it's 51 King Road.
Any change? You'll be changing none of the use inside the building, correct? It's what it was used for in the past? Okay. All right. There were a couple of items that were outstanding. One was, there's a metal container, storage container, that was going to be moved. Has that been moved?
Corrected as a move at Smartland Pictures.
Okay. It's within the required setbacks now?
Yeah.
Okay. Building Department will... Okay, the Building Department will review that when they come out. Then also, we received a letter from the adjoining property that the gravel parking lot will not expand in any way, but...
Correct. We have a letter from Childley Self-Storage. We're prepared to talk to them. Just got to call in here.
Okay. All right. We do have copies of that as well. No, we also have copies of that, so, yep. You don't need to press those. Okay. Paul, any questions?
No.
I'm good.
All right. Any questions?
No questions.
Side table?
I think you're going to change the sign, need a sign permit. I don't think I mentioned that Keith Vogler has filed for it, so. Okay. All right, I'm good.
I'll open the public hearing portion of this. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any further discussion? This is, I think they were in here before. The two corrections they needed to make were the ones they made tonight, which was the movement of that storage container and the permission of the property owner to keep the parking lot where it is, the gravel parking lot. Okay, as far as conditions, Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works must be given copies of any correspondence with any other approving agency. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review... Hang on, before we do that, we have to do Seeker. Can't forget Seeker. I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as Seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the applicant to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Now, under the conditions, the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works must be given copies of any correspondence with approving agencies. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the Town Fire Marshal. Any signage change shall comply with Town Code, including obtaining a signed permit. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions, if that applies. Applicant is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations, and no outside storage be allowed. And I do have conditions on here that you've already complied with, but that is the existing metal storage building on the property must be moved. So I'll remove that, actually. All right. So with those conditions, as read, the application of Keith Vogler, 106 Christina Drive, North Childley, New York, 14514. The applicant: Anthony Coleman Ali, 51 King Road, Churchville, New York, 14428. The owner, for renewal of a special use permit to allow uses of similar character, motor vehicle repair, property located at 51 King Road in the LI District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. This is approved. Contact the Building Department to move forward. All right. You're welcome. Our next applicant is the applicant of Nunzia White, 15 Black Cedar Drive, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant owner, for a special use permit to allow an in-law suite of 1,034 square feet at the property located at 15 Black Cedar Drive in an R-120 district.
I'm Nunzia White, the owner, applicant, of 15 Black Cedar Drive.
Okay. Explain what you're going to do and what it's going to look like.
We're doing an in-law addition for the parents.
Paul, any questions?
No.
Right now.
I think it fits within the setbacks. I don't have any variances or anything like that.
Correct. There are comments from the Town Engineer. You received the comments from the Town Engineer?
I did.
You'll be able to comply with each of those comments?
I'm sorry?
You'll be able to comply?
Yes.
With each of those comments?
Yes.
Okay. So there are no variances are required. That's correct, right, Paul? I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
Okay.
I'm good. Mike?
Okay. No questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
Anything else from the side table? This time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this application? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 Messing everybody up tonight. I also vote yes. Any further discussion?
Do you have standard conditions for in-law apartments?
Yes, I do have those on here, which I'll read off. Are there any other discussion points? Any other discussion points at all? So as far as Seeker, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency, based on evidence and information presented at the meeting, determine the applicant to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Okay, so for conditions, applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the Town Fire Marshal. Building permits should not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, code compliance regulations. The special use permit is granted for use by in-law only and cease to exist when the in-law ceases to use it. The apartment may not be used as a rental unit. And the applicant's attorney shall file the decision letter with the book of deeds of the Monroe County Clerk's Office and provide proof of filing to the Planning Board Attorney and Building Department. The decision letter must be indexed against the property in the owner's name upon filing. The applicant shall consider recommendations for handicap accessibility to include but not limited to wider doors, grab bars, and ramp access, et cetera. I think that was part of the recommendations you saw in the engineer's letter?
Yes.
Okay. So based on those conditions, the application of Nunzia White, 15 Black Cedar Drive, Rochester, New York, 14624. Applicant owner, for a special use permit to allow an in-law suite, 1,034 square feet at the property located 15 Black Cedar Drive in a R-120 district. Paul?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I also vote yes. This is approved?
Thank you.
Next application is the application of J.D. Enson Inc., 100 International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant for Garage 4119 Holdings Company, LLC, 100 International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14624. Owner, for preliminary site plan approval to erect a warehouse addition, 8,000 square feet, to the existing facility of the property located at 100 International Boulevard in the LI District. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Ian Cookman. I'm with the Maynard Rue Associates, and I'm here with the applicant, J.D. Enson, the owner. And I'm with the... Aliyah Diakmal. So what we're doing here is proposing extended warehousing in two phases, in totality of 8,000 square feet, for the sprinkler system. Where we're proposing it, I'm assuming you guys have the plans and the location.
You do.
The hash area to the north of the existing asphalt parking lot. This is where we're going to be proposing the warehousing. It's going to displace 12 existing parking stalls. And based on the existing business operations since last year, when they began operating in this facility and the automated systems, it's anticipated that those parking spaces are no longer needed for employee parking. In the spirit of maintaining some sort of consistency with zoning, we're going to reserve bank parking elsewhere on the site in the event that that parking is needed in the future or the parcel is sold to a different light industrial use in the future, that area is allocated. Two items worth discussing with the board today is, we're still under the minimum zone requirement of parking. I think the total is 88 required, and we're proposing 56 with bank parking. Again, based on the client's need, our client's needs, 56 is more than adequate. In addition to parking is loading docks. With the addition of the two phases of warehousing, it bumps us up from a minimum of two loading dock spaces to four. Again, based on current business operations, where it's not needed, two is sufficient. So those are items worth discussing with the board here today. And with that, I'll close my opening remarks and open up some board for discussion and further comment.
Did you receive the Town Engineer's letter?
Yes. Those two items were brought up, and the Town Engineer's items. Other than that, technically speaking, we're able to comply with those comments.
Okay. So will you be complying by adding 33 spaces, or are you going to get a variance for less? Based on his calculations, you'll need 33 land bank parking spaces versus 27.
Yeah, we could allocate some more bank parking where that stormwater management device is to the southeast corner of the site, the south, that little turnaround area. There's an area there where we could potentially get some more bank parking.
Six spaces.
What's that?
Six spaces is all you need, right?
Correct.
You just add it to that part. And then for the off-street parking, the loading burst, you would have to go in front of the zoning board for a variance on that?
I'm assuming so?
Yeah, well, you would have to, I'm telling you. Yes. You would have to. So I'm not sure if you're on their calendar or not, but you'll need to get on their calendar to get that variance.
Would that be a result of referrals from your board, or does that...
No, it's independent. You would apply to them for a variance. Instead of having four off-street bursts, they have two, is what your application would be for.
Okay.
And the Building Department can assist you with filing that, that request. How many employees will there be? Are you going to reduce the number of employees with the automation?
Um, no. No.
It's right... You have 60 right now, I think, right?
Yes.
And what are the hours? What are your hours of operation? How many hours do you work in a day?
Six to four. And guys that did a different shift, they some sort of six, some sort of seven, some seven.
It's basically a daytime shift. There's no overnight shifts, no evening shifts. Okay. Okay. Paul, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Just a general question. What do you make over there?
We produce, well, we process fresh seed.
Okay.
We process fresh seed. And we started running, facing a lot of these, quite a lot of stuff. That grew more than yours, so.
Good.
I'm good.
Glenn?
I'm good.
You were just here two years ago, right? To build that building, and you're already putting on an addition?
Yeah, I believe you.
That's good news.
It's good.
Things don't cost... I mean, it's really expensive.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe it's a little sticker shopping.
Yeah, I'm sure. Mike, any questions?
No questions.
Keith, any questions?
No questions at this time.
At this time, I'll open up the public hearing portions. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I also vote yes. Any further discussion? Side table, any comments? Any further discussion with the board? If not, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as Seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. So for conditions, I have the approval is subject to final approval of the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works. The Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the Town Fire Marshal. This is pending approval of the Zone Board of Appeals for all required variances. Applicant to comply with all conditions of the Zoning Board of Appeals as applicable. Any signage change shall comply with the Town Code, including obtaining signed permits. Will you be providing 1% of the total project cost into landscaping for the building? We don't have a landscape plan. It hasn't gone to the Conservation Board.
I think our goal is to develop a landscape plan to satisfy the town departments for landscaping.
Okay. So then, you'll submit that plan to the Conservation Board, and they meet on the last?
First Monday of the month.
First Monday of the month?
So if next month doesn't apply, because September is, that's Labor Day, so it'll be the second month.
Okay. And when do they have to have that into them by? Do you know? What's cutoff date?
Should have it in probably a week before.
Okay.
Somewhere in the week of Labor Day.
So they're meeting on the second Monday in September. You need to have that about a week before. Be a landscape plan. They'll review it and provide their recommendations.
And it'd probably be best to do that based on 8,000 square foot. So it's based on your construction costs. Do it on 8,000, so you don't have to come back and go through that exercise again.
So the condition will be the applicant shall supply a landscape plan drawn by a licensed landscape architect, along with the required checklist to the Conservation Board for review and recommendations. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit the landscape certificate of compliance to the Building Department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions, and the application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance Paul, can you provide the checklist and everything for the Conservation Board to them?
I'll send it to him tomorrow when I send him the variance application.
Perfect.
And variance application is due a week from tomorrow, if you want to be on the
So there's the two boards. You go in front of the Conservation and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All right. Any other conditions? Based on those conditions, the application of J.D. Enson, Inc., 100 International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant: Garage 4119 Holdings, LLC, Company, LLC, 100 International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14624. Owner. Paul, did they have submitted final?
Yes.
For preliminary site plan approval with a waiver of final to erect a warehouse addition, 8,000 square foot, to the existing facility at the property located at 100 International Boulevard in the LI District. Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. This is approved?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So can I have your name added to the checkup list? I'm nice on.
You too.
Aliyah Diakmal. D.I.A. H.J. Alliash. I changed it from Joseph.
Joseph Smith. My father-in-law's name.
Seriously? She kills you.
It's great.
My father-in-law's name.
That's great.
That's pretty funny.
We're off the record.
Sure.
I apologize.
Certainly.
I'm going to pay the pipe for art. Nobody has to lick it. I have four bucks in my pocket. I don't need you to come on in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Ben. Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to comb my hair.
I know you wanted to look good for the audience.
Get the glamour shots.
Hang on, let me read the application. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just explained some of the parts that I haven't basically walked through.
Okay.
If you want it up here also, I'll locate this.
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks. While you're doing that, I'll read the application. The application of Arthur Piers, Wegman's Food Markets, 100 Market Street, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant, Wegman's Food Market Street, Inc., 100 Market Street, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner. For preliminary site plan approval to erect storage building thirty-two thousand two hundred square feet and additional one hundred and fifty-two trailer parking lot, the parking lot of the property located at 249 Fisher Road in the G.I.R.A. ten district.
Thank you very much for your patience. Arthur Piers, Wegman's Food Markets, New York. And with me this evening, Garth Minicorne, Costage Engineering. Application tonight is pretty basic as far as the usage of the building. It's a thirty-two thousand, rounded four hundred square foot. Single story, albeit thirty-foot high, trailer stripping operation, and then associated one hundred and fifty spaces. Can I walk around and make a reading? Is that working?
Yeah.
You have, once again, copies of the same here. So here again, it's for this three hundred, thirty-two thousand four hundred, associated one hundred and fifty, partly trailer spaces. And purpose, what happens here is what we come in here, they bring in pallets from other stores, they bring in the plastic and the recyclable pallets, obviously they're reused, and then they have their surplus product that goes back into the warehouse. So it's a sole purpose there. There's no drains, et cetera, like that. It's a dry operation in essence. And thirty-seven days, I think, twenty-seven days, thirty-seven days, correct? And we have to probably about ten to twenty employees here, twenty-four hour operation. As far as the location, this is the overall complex. And you can see we're going this up, we're at the southern end, if you will, and it's southeast, if you will, of our culinary center, and then southwest of our community's building off to the right here. We're well within our boundaries as far as the districts. There's basically a, the right industrial is roughly in this area here, and then actually on your plan, let me watch through that, because it's supposed to be packed. You can see the difference between the G.I. and L.I. districts, and that's why we're trying to, and we have an understanding listed on our application, and I thought I'd just clear for everyone to understand what that means, and there's an overlap between the two. And again, that shows the video packet that overruns. As far as wetlands, we did have Costage Engineering went out there, they did a survey at the Land Management Report that was submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers, who are waiting for jurisdictional determination on that, number one. We also, as far as the outfit logical, we have submitted an application to ship all for inquiry as to whether or not to vent artifacts out here. It's highly unlikely, only since because of a threatened scope of the existing development overall parcel, we don't anticipate it, but here again, I understand the board needs that information, and as soon as we get our assets on, we'll have a determination from the Army Corps of Engineers. This southeast portion of the site is heavily wooded. In fact, we're just taking a very small part of the trees down, not too many, just, and now we have an extreme buffer between certainly our residents on Fisher Road. And then in your photographs, there I've taken a couple shots, the first one of the building from Jetty Drive looking north. I have that shot. I also have a shot from Jetty Drive looking east to the location of the proposed building and development. And then also I looked to the west, so as you see that endless buffer, heavily treated, educated buffer with consideration electing some parkway residents, there is no impact whatsoever. If there's any questions, I don't know, go to the right of the press. Now, as far as the wetlands, there is a little, well, south of us, this area is our area of development, just south of us, there are some wetlands. Once again, we're waiting for determination, but this project will not impact it. The only location is this very small, in the expert opinion of Costage Engineering, is that this is an isolated wetland, so we're waiting for that. That's it on the large picture. Interesting enough, back in 2020, we had submitted and we received approval from this board, which we appreciated for our story for trailer parking. Well, COVID came along, budgets were all messed up, the whole world went upside down for me. The point is that this building, really, in essence, in the location of that was previously approved in 2020, albeit definitely incremental track and trailer. And the reason for the track and trailer consolidation on this parcel is bringing up from Butch Avenue to relieve some of the tension over there, the inner conflict between all the trailers, and then I think when the trailer is not patrolling, you see that every day. That's number one. Number two, Witten Road. Very congested. And then surely, last but not least, we may have a group here. We have been putting trailers down here as our folks trying to figure out what to do. So repeat Sorryville and Jones, Witten Road, Witten Road, and Brooks Avenue, so that's the reason for that. As far as traffic, we're figuring maybe fifty coming in and out of the day. That seems a lot, that's over twenty-four hour period, and it's constant. So we do not feel with all the traffic on Chinal Avenue, and it wraps itself, that fifty coming and going is not going to be impacted anyway. Once again, it's, and it's primarily from maybe nine hours, six, we don't know until fifteen. That's it. And if somewhere, if there's any questions, that would be us.
You did receive, Michael, hands count the engineers. I see you responded to each of those, so you'll have no problems complying with each?
Correct. There's a number of them, and including the allegations, which is in there, which is just a photo of Minicorne. We haven't designed it yet. This is similar to what we have in another, down in Virginia. So it's thirty, once again, thirty-foot high, buried twenty-two, I believe, by your father. We have two twenty-two, a hundred, a small portion to the west is the office. So we understand, yes, we have to come back to either formal or informal, to the building department, to build a permit plan, and we're obviously obligated and committed to that. This falls all the other comments, it's a bit common with engineering, we'll address it. We haven't addressed anything specifically satisfactory tonight, so we can add to getting this.
So you didn't build any of the parking spots that were approved? And that's why you have so many for the stripping? Okay. Got it, okay. All right. Paul, any questions?
No.
So architecture is going to be the same, same materials and colors as everything else out there?
Correct. Your building is back, what's happening, we have a large profile that we have this building here, basically, we have this water tower, I think it's seventeen feet, and this is twenty-seven, this is developing its home, this building, thirty feet, so it's in scale. And as you see the photographs, when you look at the photographs again, I think this is probably the first one, those field photos, as you're looking towards the east, you can barely see basically the waste building and the associated sink. And then in the very distance, you can see a water tower, I can barely see it on the horizon. So it's a small profile in as far as the material metal, and as far as water, and so forth.
And then landscaping, were you going to do some on-site or make a donation to the town?
We have yet to design it, we will design it, and we will commit to the 1% total to the town, partial to the town, partial loss, but we obviously run that by you.
Okay.
Paul, we're committed to 100%, and I understand in all time that it's 100% of the building cost and not the entire space in a building, but that's a cloud.
Just 1% of the, of this project, of this application? 1%?
Okay. Yeah, but not of just the building, 1% of the building.
Of the project, the total cost for this project, parking spots, the building, everything that you're doing. All right.
I'm good.
We're committed to that.
Thanks, Art.
So you said nine to six is the general operation?
These are twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours?
Yeah, but the transportation is more of a limit in hours.
Okay, so that's when the trucks will be coming in? In and out?
Trucks coming in and out.
Okay. Anything else?
It's the, I said, for the deliveries, is the, and these are like more of the overnight than the warehouses are pretty much overnight, and that's a twenty-four hours. It's going to be twenty-four hours, but fifty, so.
And you write size in pallets for individual stores, delivery screen?
You know, we have the product, take back pallets that they've hidden in the product lot, bring them back, and then it's the whole reuse of them, and once again, they're materially plastic, we bring them all back and recycle it. And then as far as there might be some surplus product, we bring it back to the warehouse and.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm good.
Reusing some, I know, district, district of the solar house.
Mike?
Ah, no questions.
Keith?
No questions.
Any additional comments from the?
Our, what did you say about the compensation? You doing the 1%? You committed to the 1%? We were committed to 1% of the code. That's the entire project. So it's a matter of, how do we split it? Do we cut a check for 1%? Or do we landscaping 50% and then give you 50%? Does that work with the town? Whatever you're going to do, I want it on record. Will you? No, no, that doesn't work. All right, we're not playing, let's make it. Okay. You're either going to say on the record, it's going to be a condition, that it's a 1% donation, or we're going to do 50%, and you're going to have to break that down and give it to me, and then cut a check. You're looking for that to add me now, or are you saying we have to provide it?
Paul, if we get a landscape to the?
We don't have a landscape, that's what I'm not trying to clarify. It's more, we don't have a landscape plan here. We will be presenting one, so I don't know what that would be. And that's the only reason why I say, is it? That's a question back to the town. Is that acceptable?
So I think we, so I think we submitted it to the conservation board, and then whatever remains to the 1%, you can make a donation. If there is a remaining, or if you wanted to completely landscape it, you could. It work for the town? Okay, sounds good. Any other questions or comments? At this time, we'll?
Wait, is the parking lot's light lit?
Yes.
Storage, trailer, storage area? I do not have plans showing that. Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's. Garth, you submitted a lighting plan already, correct? Okay. Anything else?
Use backup alarms on the trucks? Uh, I, we saw. Between the hours of ten and seven, is there a lot of movement? Will there be a lot of movement? Not any, I mean, there'd be not more than there is today. And I'm not aware of any complaints from the union. I have not received any either, Art, but I'm just thinking, the volume of truck that you're going to be bringing in. Correct. And you're pushing it that much closer to Lexington, it's not shielded so much by the warehouses, you're kind of out in the open there. That's my concern. Understood, yes, I understand.
Do you use one of those tractors like you do at the warehouse, just, do mechanical work just to move them around? Do they have disabled backup alarms?
Right.
Yeah.
I'll have to confirm that.
All right. Is that what you use there? Is that what you'll use here, though? Okay. Maybe you could confirm that if they? And then for employee parking, how many employees will be in here?
We figure ten to twenty, and we believe there's sufficient parking just to use. We have maintenance facilities, a number of open spaces here, and we also have a good number of open spaces here, so that whole ten to twenty dissipated between the two, there's sufficient parking. If there was ever a need, I mean, certainly, we would kind of request you to build additional in the complex, we feel that we have sufficient capacity.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing portion of this application. Last chance, anyone from the audience like to speak. This time, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Any further discussion, comments? Paul, David, you're good with waiver of final with the condition of the jurisdictional review letter?
Yes.
Okay.
And the ship all document. Correct. Yep.
Okay. As far as conditions. The approval is subject to final approval of the town engineer and the commissioner of public works. The town engineer and the commissioner of public works, I'll hand you the backup, but let me do seeker, keep forgetting seeker tonight. I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Have a second?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Now, once again, onto the conditions. Approval is subject to final approval of the town engineer, the commissioner of public works. The town engineer and the commissioner of public works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Copies of all easements associated with this project shall be provided the assistant town council for approval, and all filing information, i.e. library and page numbers, shall be noted on the MyLars. Just to confirm, I did see in town engineer's letter that we'll be entering a agreement. Is that true? Yes.
Yeah, they're required then to do post-construction, stone wall agreement.
Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all easements shall be filed with the rec, and recorded with the Monroe County, with Monroe County, and filed, recorded and acknowledged by the town of Chilai Clerk. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. Any signage change shall comply with the town code, including obtaining permits. Applicant shall provide landscape equivalent of 1% of the total project. The applicant shall supply a landscape plan drawn by a licensed architect, licensed landscape architect, along with the required checklist to the conservation board for review and recommendation. And upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from its landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial compliance with the approved landscape plan. So submit the plan, determine how much landscaping you're going to do, and then the balance, if there is one, you would submit to the town in the form of the donation for the 1%. Okay. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, code compliance regulations. And upon receiving the jurisdictional review letter from the Army Corps and/or? And upon receiving the jurisdictional review letter from the Army Corps and/or New York State DEC affirming the small wetlands area is a disconnected and non-jurisdictional area, that's another condition. And then the second additional condition will be the proposed stormwater management features will be privately owned and maintained. The town will require the property owner to enter into a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement with the town and to provide proper access easements to the town. The access easements and the stormwater control facility maintenance agreement will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the Planning Board Attorney, and then filed with the county clerk's office prior to the signing of the MyLars. Any other conditions on this application? Based on those conditions, the application of Arthur Pires, Pires, right? Pires, sorry. Wegmans Food Markets, 100 Market Street, Rochester, New York, 14624. Applicant, Wegmans Food Market, Inc., 100 Market Street, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner. For a preliminary site plan approval with the waiver of final to erect a storage building 32,200 square feet and additional parking, 152 trailer parking lot at the property located 249 Fisher Road, G.I.R.A. 10 district. Have a second?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. This is approved. Thank you. You're welcome. Good to see you as well. Haven't seen you in a while. The last order of business is the approval of the minutes from last month's meeting.
Second?
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I also vote yes. Any other business? It is adjourned.